I would like to call the meeting to order and we're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Mr. Steinle's daughter is in a playoff game this evening and he's missed most of her games, so he's there tonight. And Mr. Smith's at an important business meeting out of town. So, and we have no written communications and no one that signed in wishing to speak this evening. So we will kick it off with a report of boards and committees. Did anybody else have any other committee meetings besides legislative meetings? Mr. Steinle and Mr. Fenella and I met with Karen McMahon, who is a New York State Assembly, 146 district, which ranges from Pendleton all the way down to Snyder. The intent of the meeting was to basically go through all of the things that Mr. Fenella had presented to us last meeting regarding our portion of the foundation aid, which we have not been getting the percentage that we have been promised. So we are lobbying to try and get that. She was aware, it turned out, of that certain districts are not getting the 60% that they were promised. And we showed her quite a few statistics that she had not seen that gave her some more ammunition. She had a letter with her that she and some other legislators had presented to the Speaker Heasty. And there, it was a list of 58 districts representing 8.6% of the districts in the state that are getting less than 60% of the foundation aid. So we're hopeful that that will start the ball rolling to try to get some of the money that we're owed by the state. We were also scheduled to meet with Senator Ransenhoffer, but we're going to have to reschedule that because he wasn't able to make that meeting. There's more to come on this. We are not finished lobbying for it. We will keep pushing to try to get the money that we're owed, but that's where we're at this point. And so that will take us then to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. And if, you know, if I may add, just to your point about the legislative meeting, you know, we plan to follow up with Assembly member McMahon because even if they brought us to a minimum of 60% of our full funding of foundation aid, it's still not enough because we're at, you know, 58% right now. So our goal is for that number to be increased more in line with the other Erie County districts as we looked at that data at our last meeting. You know, there are some districts that are fully funded or overfunded and we seem to be lagging behind significantly. So we're going to continue to follow up those conversations. It's not just a one-time meeting. But thank you. And now I'm pleased to welcome representatives from our high school to talk about the action plan that they have in place for this school year aligned to our Amherst District Strategic Plan.
Thank you very much. It's always a really exciting opportunity. Thank you to Superintendent Fenella, the Board of Education for this opportunity. We really enjoy this opportunity in terms of shining a spotlight on our students and our faculty at Amherst and all of the great things going on. I got a bit of good news to just start this presentation. Unlike historic ones that go back a decade of my presentations, there'll be a lot less pigeon in this presentation, a lot more tiger tonight. So I brought a lot of tigers with me, which include Professor Maxick over here, Haley, Quentin, Max, I got Al Naz, Alani, and did I forget? And Olivia's right over there. I got Al Naz and Dahlia. And a bunch of staff. Mrs. Lash, thank you. And my partners, Nan Ables and the new father, Mr. Lonzak over here. I'm off to a great start. We are a NICE Ed recognition school the past three years consecutively, 2017, 18, and 19. And that's a great and rewarding opportunity for us and great recognition for all the work we do in it. And it really kind of bodes well for us in terms of it measures our students from all levels in closing those gaps with some of our students that need extra support all the way up to our high-flying students. So very proud of that. So starting the presentation with that, moving on to the next slide. In our strategic plan, we work very closely with those anchored pillars of our overall tradition, pride, and achievement, and then looking at learning and achievement, student life, and Amherst pride. And tonight, we are going to feature some select items from our strategic plan. We have a lot going on within the plan, but we wanted to present to you this evening our Syracuse University Project Advance program that has blossomed this year under Professor Maxick's guidance. And you'll see some evidence of that from some of our wonderful students in that program. I have two of our Trail Blazers with us, and Trail Blazers has been a growing leadership program for our ninth and 10th graders that is maturing and continuing to show more, not only leadership opportunities for those students, but just a number of new initiatives that go along with that. Mr. Lonzak will speak also about a new initiative we're doing with teacher and student mentoring. And then Nan and the visiting students and Mrs. Lash will take a look at the NICE Ed Seal of Biliteracy, which is coming together nicely. It is a statewide initiative that we took under our wing this year as well. So those are our featured points of the presentation. It all starts annually with our summer retreat. We get our strategic planning team together. We typically start in the spring of the year, like this year will, the spring, and we'll survey our staff as we bring forward the new initiatives for next year and get some of that initial input that we can process over the summer, start putting some of the framework together for our plan. Towards the end of the summer, we firm that up. We run it by the staff again in the fall and we kind of roll up our sleeves and get to work. We have a nice cross-section of our faculty that work on all of these initiatives. We're featuring some this evening, but there's many, many more, and there's a lot of fine print here, but just evidence that there's a lot of layers to this plan in terms of bringing new initiatives to the fold every year, as well as nurturing those existing initiatives from previous years that need support and momentum. So we've got a lot of momentum going in the number of programs that date back three years in our strategic plan. So we're excited about all of those. So without further ado, as promised, I'm going to turn it over to Professor Maxick to tell you about our new and exciting Syracuse Project Advance program.
Professor Maxick, I like the sound of him.
He likes that.
So I'm actually going to steal that podium because that's where I'm going to bring my students on. What piece of work is man? How noble in reason, how infinite in faculty. Now, when Shakespeare said those words, I'm sure he was filled with thoughts of great thinkers, great inventors, Aristotle's, Da Vinci, Chaucer, maybe even himself. See, he understood some things. He understood what people were capable of doing and what they were capable of creating. He also understood that while people had fears, they could also be fearless. I'm sure we've heard of Jerry Seinfeld. I'm sure we've heard his funny but true statement about fears, that the number two fear is death. Number two. The number one fear, standing in front of a crowd delivering a speech. Well, I'm happy to report to you and thanks to Superintendent Fenella, Assistant Superintendent Shanahan for their undying support in this program. Of course, to Mr. Greg Pigeon, thank you, my brother in education who believes in this program as deeply as I do. We're finally able to bring this special gift to Amherst High School. So what is this gift? Well, Syracuse University calls it presentational speaking. So what is that? Well, it's basically public speaking on some serious steroids. So what does that mean? Well, it comes with three major gifts. First of all, it teaches our students to articulate what they want to say and what they need to say. Gift number two is that it promotes leadership traits, the three Ps we call them. Poise, planning, and patience. And that third, that third P is probably the most important because it also garners with it a sense of ethical listening. We teach our students how to listen to what the audience wants, what they need. We realize and recognize that the audience is the most important part of the speech, more so than the message itself, because who else are we giving the speech for? So it teaches them those three Ps to set up that sense of leadership. And the third gift, and probably the one that would make Jerry Seinfeld very proud, is that it teaches them to stand and speak with confidence, to recognize a sense of charisma, and to realize that they can overcome those fears the more they stand and deliver. So you're going to have to hold on a second. I'm going to start sounding like a little bit of an infomercial when I say, but wait, there's more. You see, 1972, Syracuse University wanted to expand beyond their, the borders of their, of their grounds. And they wanted to go into local area high schools. See, they figured that if they were going to get to know their incoming freshmen, why not let the incoming freshmen know what the rigors of a robust program in college was really like? And so they extended their program offerings into local area high schools. And now they're in well over 200 schools, not just in our area, not at all, in fact, worldwide. And they're extended into India and China today. Now, this program, when we were originally considering this program, this was something that we knew was going to take an awfully awful lot of thought. Understand that there was about 20 schools that were ahead of us for this program. And I'll just mention this very quickly. With those 20 schools, according to the director, Ms. Parrish, and Dr. Kivé, who will be coming to see us in this year, they said that, well, you may be part of this program, we're not sure. So thankfully, I had the help of one of our colleagues to create a commercial. And because of time, we can't show the commercial, but I sent it out to them. And within a week, thankfully, we were accepted. But this took a good eight months of planning and programming, putting together. So what else does this offer our students, however? Well, first of all, it offers high school credit towards their diploma, diploma requirements, something obviously necessary for their practical arts. But it also offers them the opportunity to earn three college credits that are transferable virtually everywhere. Now, just keep in mind that every community college charges $605 for a three-credit hour course. Syracuse University will charge $2,100 for a three-credit hour course. But you see, that 1972 thought created this Syracuse University Project Advance. And through this program, the Syracuse University Project Advance, or SUPA, they charge about $340 for that same course that at Syracuse University, they charge $2,100. So it's a major discount. And it doesn't stop there because there are those that still need further discounts. And who wouldn't like another discount? And so some students will pay as little as one SUPA credit of 115 for a course that generally runs about $2,100. So there's so many savings. And I have a, I really have a personal stake in this. About a year ago, my daughter's at Kent State right now, so about a year ago, she took this course in Williamsville North. In fact, they're the only other school that has presentational speaking besides Amherst in the area. And so when she took it, the Mrs. and I thought, okay, fine, we're going to spend the money, whatever. She went to Kent State and they did not give her the three credits. They gave her six credits. So my wife and I were pretty tickled about this, especially considering it kept about $4,000 in our pockets. But what was nice is that it offered her a freshman course off, and because it's a 300-level course, they also gave her three credits as a junior. So ladies and gentlemen, it is a one semester course. It's concurrent credit. It is a rigorous and robust program that we've been able to finally bring to this school, and we absolutely love it. And I can go on and on, and I could probably talk about all the other programs SUPA has to offer. But most importantly, I think what we should do is turn it over to the real heroes of this course, the students, the graduates from last semester. And in a moment, I'm going to be calling up Olivia Canizaro, who's going to be talking about her experience in the course. And then Max Dean will be delivering his, this, I believe, speech as a powerful ending and a powerful understanding of really how infinite our students' faculty really is. Thank you. Olivia.
Presentational speaking. As Professor Maxick said, people prefer to be six feet under than be standing behind a podium. I'm here to tell you that with this course, that statistic is blown out of the water. My first time standing behind the podium was a shaky one. My arms constantly moved, my legs, they tweaked. My voice did inflections here and there. I constantly paced around. But now I'm able to stand up in here in front of a crowd of 30, 40 people and not feel any trace of nervousness. This course has helped me understand that it doesn't matter if there's five people in a room, 10 people, 1,000 people in a room, because it's your speech. You tell them. Tell the audience. You are the audience. Sell yourself, maybe you don't. But you're, what you're looking to tell them is that this is a great course. This is the endless possibilities you have here. All starts with a single voice. Maybe it's a teacher. Maybe it's a friend. Maybe it's an imaginary friend you have, someone that doesn't even exist. But getting up there, getting behind a podium, getting in front of a podium, standing on a stage of thousands of people. I would never be able to do that without this course. I want everyone to know that. No little girl that I was before taking this course was able to stand right here and right now, tracing around the room, constantly shaking. Not anymore. This course has done so much for me, and no doubt it will do better for every other student who takes it. Public speaking is something that we do in our everyday lives. No doubt we'll carry it on for the rest of our adulthood. Thank you.
Thinking of facing my fears. Good evening, everyone. I believe in pilsong. Now, pilsong is a Korean word and is the motto of my Taekwondo school. Now, I've been training in martial arts since I was about six years old, and I've been going on more than 10 years now, which is crazy to think about now. But after the end of every class, after the end of everything we did, we'd always yell "pilsong" as loud as we can with one fist raised in the air. And I figured it was something that every Taekwondo school did, something that was standard across all schools, but it was something specific to our school. And then it became something specific to me and how I view the world. Now, the meaning of pilsong. In English, it means certain victory through indomitable spirit and courage. Now, it doesn't mean certain victory, as in victory that is certain, victory that is for sure, but victory that finds its own way. Now, indomitable spirit and courage. Indomitable spirit is the spirit that's inside every one of us. It is the drive that allows us to face our fears even when the odds are stacked against us, even if we're afraid of failure. And courage goes alongside of them. They're linked together. Now, having that drive and having that pilsong spirit, as we sometimes call it at our school, I didn't have that at first, but it started cultivating in me as soon as I joined that school and as soon as I became a martial artist. But in the beginning, I had a very low self-confidence. I didn't train as hard and things would make me nervous. I didn't compete much. But over time, the more I trained, the more I did Taekwondo, the more confidence I gained. But I didn't get that main spark until one particular tournament. Now, this tournament was in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And a month, about a month before the tournament, my lead instructor came up to me and asked me, "Max, do you want to do team fighting?" Now, at the time, I didn't really know what team fighting was, so I had to do my research. I had to find out what it was. Now, team fighting is a way of sparring, a way of fighting, where you have two other teammates, and there's different rounds. You each go in a round and you gain points. So really, you have to rely on your other teammates, and your other teammates are relying on you in order to win the match. Now, it was also a thing that only adults did. It wasn't a thing that kids did. And at the time, I was 15 years old. So saying yes, I was a little skeptical. I was a little nervous. But at our school, we are grounded in discipline. We're a very disciplined school. It's almost militaristic. So saying yes was the only option for me. In the military, you'd never doubt your commanding officer. You would never question his orders. Same thing happens in this Taekwondo school. And I owe myself to that, that kind of tough love, that kind of push, because in the end, I realized that it was best for me. Now, the night of the tournament, it was a Friday night before the main tournament is when we did team fighting. It was a cold night. It was in November, and it was dark. And I came in and I looked upon this room of adults, of men. I was the youngest kid there. The second youngest was my friend Tyler, and he was 20 at the time, five years older than I was. So to say the least, I was a little bit nervous, a little bit nervous. I went into the corner and did my usual warm-up routine, but I looked around at these adults in their 20s and some even in their 30s with ranks higher than me, with years of experience under their belt, even further than the seven years I had at the time. It's hard to put yourself in that position, but the nerves I felt were crushing. But I knew at that point I could not back down. There was no backing down after this. So I faced my fears. I went in the ring and I gave it my all. Did I win? No, no, I did not. I held my own, though. Our team lost, and for a long time, I blamed myself on that loss, thinking maybe if I had gotten more points in my match, maybe if I didn't lose so bad, that our team might have won in the end. But no amount of backwards thinking like that, no amount of thinking back will ever change the outcome. And the outcome was that I failed. Now, the thing about failure is that there's always a victory, there's always a certain victory that you can pull from that failure. Now, people, when they think about failure, they look away from their failure. They say, I don't want to think about that. I don't want that to cloud my mind. It brings me pain to think about that failure. But what I recommend, and what I did for myself, is I looked at that failure. I stared it in the eyes. And I told myself, I have become better because of that. I have grown stronger because of that failure, because of that loss. And without it, I wouldn't be the same person I am today. I might not be up on this podium speaking to you right now. Because that's, that event, that failure sparked that indomitable spirit inside of me, that courage, that courage to do something that seems difficult, that seems impossible. Every one of you here knows what failure feels like, I'm sure. Everybody has experienced a loss. But if you look at that loss and you tell yourself I have grown stronger because of it, you will become a better person, and that loss, that failure will no longer cloud your mind. And that is why I believe in pilsong. Thank you.
Turn it over to Mr. Lonzak. Wonderful job to both of you.
Thanks, yes.
Professor Maxick, I may need to sit in on a few of your classes for my C-plus intro.
And thank you for having me follow President Pigeon's speaking crowd. Thank you, Mr. Pigeon. No, thank you. Thank you all for being here. It's great to see a full house and to see the wonderful students that we have to highlight for you all here this evening. That's a phenomenal part of being part of this Amherst High School community is that we are very student-centered. And a part of that is a new initiative that many of our teachers and our student support staff and us as administrators felt that we needed to bring back that existed several years ago at Amherst High School, but was essentially a teacher mentoring program designed specifically to target some freshmen that would really benefit from some additional encouragement, support, and one-on-one mentorship to really make sure that they have a pivotal, good experience during their first year as an incoming ninth grader to Amherst High School. So I'd just like to highlight that a little bit for you, and I have a few things up here on the slide. So again, what we did this year is through our instructional support team and with our transitional program from eighth grade to the ninth grade with Mr. Crown being the middle school folks over there, is we had identified some freshman students who really felt that we could, could hone in on and target to make sure they have, like I said, that additional support and encouragement during their freshman year. Mentoring here at Amherst High School is a research-based mentoring program. So a lot of our studies in mentoring have shown us that if students have a teacher targeted to them to help them mentor, meet with them roughly once a week or so during the high school year, they're two times more likely to have high levels of academic achievement. They're twice as likely to be able to participate in extracurriculars. And most importantly, that step down there at the bottom, 60% more likely to develop positive attitudes towards school in general, which again, going into freshman year, which is a difficult year for high schoolers, is paramount. So again, we've targeted freshman students, and the research shows that by targeting freshman students to give them that additional support and guidance, they are far more likely to exceed in high school, graduate, and do great things. So again, just a few nuts and bolts on this freshman teacher mentoring program. Again, these are teacher volunteers, and this year, we've chosen to have 15 volunteer teachers. Each of them take on a mentor student. What they're doing is they're meeting roughly once to twice a month, sometimes more, either during school, during common planning time, or after school, or perhaps before school, to meet, to be, again, a guide on the side, to check in with them, to communicate with their teachers, to communicate home, to encourage them, to help them find what their niche is or what their interest is at high school, to make sure that ultimately they have a trusted adult in the building to be there for them at all times. Again, this is a pilot program that we brought back to Amherst, and we're going to see how it goes. We're going to continue to expand, and we're going to continue to work with incoming freshmen years forward, and then the current freshmen hopefully will still have those mentorships as their sophomores, juniors, and seniors. This is again, a great initiative and something I'm proud to share a little bit with and to hopefully give some continued updates as the program moves on years past, years prior, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Lonzak. And along those same lines, we're happy to report that our leadership group with our Trail Blazers is really, really growing and blossoming. And part of that initiative was targeted at freshmen and sophomores, leading into coming out of Webb from the middle school, those leadership opportunities, adding on and an open call to folks beyond Webb that want to get involved in leadership opportunities and identifying ninth graders and having them continue on as their 10th graders. And it really focuses, some of the initial focus was on hosting for shadow opportunities when we bring our eighth graders over in the fall, that we have trained ninth-grade mentors that can do that and leaders to do that. But also starting to get into the realm of volunteerism, of service to the school, and really adding to our culture and climate initiatives. And so we want to have a seamless six through 12 leadership opportunity within the district. I have two of my wonderful Trail Blazers with me, Quentin and Haley, to tell you a little bit about their experience. They are sophomores, so they are in year two, and they got to experience the freshman level and the sophomore level of Trail Blazers. So take it away. You're more than welcome to, or just stand where you're comfortable.
Okay, so my name's Haley Augustino. I'm president of the class of 2022, and I'm going to talk to you about my experience from being a Trail Blazer. So going into ninth grade, I remember going to the summer training, and I was very anxious for high school. But just attending that one summer training kind of gave me the reassurance and comfort I needed to know high school's going to be okay. So as a 10th grader, it's really nice to kind of like re-gift that comfort to the current ninth graders. So that's been really rewarding for me. And also this year, in October, we had this spectacular school night event. It was a really great thing to be a part of. We raised so much money for the Kevin Guest House. And it's just an opportunity I would not have had without being a part of Trail Blazers, and it's opened so many doors for me that I would have never even knew were there.
I'm Quentin Rondo. I'm the vice president of the sophomore class. I want to start with our summer training program for the Trail Blazers program. We met with Coach Masters. He's a, like a motivational speaker guy. We did, at first, I was really nervous to go back to school. I haven't seen like a lot of my friends and people from school all summer. And it was nice to have like a team, like team-building experience with everyone, kind of like build our team for like high school as a Trail Blazers. Kind of was, it was just really nice to be around everyone. And I just want to talk about the shadows program. So in like my middle school and high school career, I've had two or three shadows. And I think I've built like a good personal bond with each of them. So this past, or this past year, I had a shadow named Garrett, and he was coming in new from St. Ben's. in new from St. Ben's, so he knew no one, like didn't really have a lot of experience with our school, and I just, I, I had a good time like, um, shadowing him here. And, uh, this, this year, I have two or three classes with him, and it's nice to like talk to him every day and like help him through things that he might need help with, that he's new to our school, so, yeah.
Thank you very much, it's been really wonderful working with them personally and part of our initiative, but not necessarily by design to begin with, it's really become a wonderful transitional opportunity as students come in as freshmen, they get kind of direct leadership training with the Pathfinders, and they work together on that program, so it becomes kind of like a double transition for them. Uh, and they do a nice job, our sophomore Trailblazers, uh, with welcoming all of our new freshmen, uh, and Start With Low was a new program that we did this year with them, where we just did some special activities where they introduced themselves to each homeroom, uh, to, to just make the connection to a face and a name, and we assigned each Trailblazer a freshman homeroom, and they did a lot of nice, uh, things with putting Post-it notes on each locker of the freshmen, just an affirming and welcoming, uh, opportunity for us. So, we're looking to build on all of these programs, and I just wanted to report to you that the Trailblazers are really becoming an important leadership group within the high school. I will now turn it over to Nan Abels and Susan Lash, who is here, to talk about the Seal of Bilinguality Program. And our students naturally, who Nan will introduce.
Yes, I, I will. So first, um, the Seal of Bilinguality, Dr. Shanahan put this on our map last August, and what it is, it is a, a program to encourage, which it's, uh, developed by New York State Education Department, and it not only encourages, um, to study languages, but it also reaffirms the diversity and our, in our multilingual society. And, um, students that go through the, um, the rigors of going, of, of earning this, which Mrs. Lash will describe, um, after I go through this, they earn a medal that New York State presents to them, and they will wear it, you'll see them, you'll see, you'll see these two girls, and you'll see two other students wearing them on graduation, and then they'll have a special seal on their, on their diploma. But it's not, it's, there really is a lot of work, which, which the girls and Mrs. Lash will, will talk to you about. This is also, uh, calculated into the college career and civic readiness for ESSA, which every student succeeds X, which is something that Dr. Shanahan presented on a little while back. And so now, um, I'll ask Mrs. Lash and Dahlia and El Nas to come up, and I'm so excited to hear you, have you here, the girls too. We've had a lot of fun discussing what outfits they are gonna wear too. Don't they look great? They look great.
So hi, I'm Susan Lash, and I'm the English teacher and the English as a new language teacher, the ENL teacher over at the high school. So, the process for getting the Seal of Bilinguality is actually quite complicated. It's a twofold process. In the first part, the students have to prove their proficiency in the English language, and our students have achieved high grades on the Regent's English, the Global and the U.S. History exams, along with some of their science classes. All of our students, there's four, uh, together, all together this year, have received grades between ninety and ninety-eight on these four tests. That's fairly amazing, and that's in a second language. They have also, um, had to score commanding on a special test given to English, just English as a second language speakers called the NICE SLOT, it's given every May, and all the students have scored commanding, which is the highest proficiency level on that as well. And the third thing that they've had to do to prove their English language proficiency is all of four students have scored between eighty-eight and one hundred in English eleven and English twelve here at Amherst Central High School, which is a pretty impressive series. The second portion of the bilingual, um, Bilinguality thing is to prove that they are proficient in their native language. This is a very complicated process. So the first thing that they have to do is they have to go through a series of testing in their native languages, and this involves speaking, reading, listening and writing. So all the students completed exams in Arabic or Dari, which, um, El Nas speaks, which is very closely related to Farsi. And they've all achieved the highest scores in all four areas in their native languages. But they're not done. So finally, it's from the state, it's very complicated. So finally, the students have to give a presentation, and the presentations will take place in May, and the presentations will involve speaking both, speaking, listening, reading and writing both in their native languages and in English. So, and that will take place before a committee of faculty, um, from the school, as well as native speakers of their own language from the community. So, the practice, again, they're very involved, so they're giving reports, they're giving oral and visual presentations, they're making videos, they're giving interviews, and I'm told there's also even some delicious food involved. So El Nas, who we're gonna meet in a moment, she is working on a presentation, um, on a project on feminism in Afghanistan. Dahlia, who you're also gonna meet, is working on a very involved and delicious project related to foods in Syria. Our third student who's participating is Jafar Kadum, and he is working on a project on immigration from the Middle East. And finally, Hassan Hassan is completing a project on the current Iraqi revolution. So they'll give those presentations in May. So I'm gonna let Dahlia speak to you now, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about, about Amherst, oh sorry, El Nas is gonna go first, sorry.
Hello everyone, I'm El Nas Amini, and today I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself and about my journey from Afghanistan to the United States of America. I grew up in Afghanistan, as a kid, I loved it there, but as I got older, I became more aware of the limitations placed on women in Afghanistan. There are very few rights given, um, there are very few rights given to women in Afghanistan, unusually, those rights get taken away by the society. Girls are forced to get married at a very young age. My mom was forced to get married at the age of fourteen, and she was forced to give up her right to an education. My mom didn't want my sister and I to face the same circumstances, so that's why she decided to leave the country and move somewhere safe, somewhere that people would not underestimate our privilege just because we're girls. So in April two thousand fourteen, um, we left Afghanistan and traveled to Pakistan. We filed a case with the United Nations Eye Commissioner for Refugees. In, um, January two thousand sixteen, we came to the United States of America. In the U.S., one doesn't have to be a man in order to have freedom, rather, freedom is a right given to all. I'm very thankful to be here, and also, I'm very fortunate to be a part of Amherst Central High School. Amherst has provided me with an opportunity to take the Seal of Bilinguality. Taking the Seal of Bilinguality was a great achievement. It shows that I have language proficiency in my native language, and also, the skills that I've learned here at Amherst from my teachers are going to be eternal, and I'm sure those skills and knowledge will be beneficial to me as I move up to my next educational level. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dahlia, and today I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about myself. I was originally born in Iraq, however, I had to move from Iraq, actually escaped, to Syria due to a war. I was only two years old when I had to move. I lived in Syria for about ten years, and I lived it there. Life in Syria was great. Everything was so nice, I loved the people, I loved my place, it felt like home to me. But a couple of years after, life changed because of circumstances, and another war took place. When I was young, I, I always dreamed of becoming a cardiologist, but that dream seemed so far to reach because of all the circumstances I had to go through. I escaped in two thousand, two thousand and twelve to Turkey, and learning the language in Turkey was such a hard job to do. We couldn't afford a tutor because we had to leave everything in Syria. So I started by watching YouTube videos, learning the language online, reading books, listening to music. It was so difficult to reach, and I did face some judgment from a lot of Turkish people because of my lack to the language and I couldn't speak it well, but a couple of years after, I've got used to the language. In two thousand and fifteen, my parents wanted us to move to somewhere safe, somewhere where we had more education opportunities, where people wouldn't judge us for who we are. So we moved to, um, we moved to the United States, however, my father couldn't make it due to his medical conditions. I got to the United States in March two thousand and fifteen, and here the journey starts again. I had to learn the language, I had to go to school, adapt to a whole new culture once again. The United States made me believe that adapting to a new country and finally reaching my dream of becoming a cardiologist can come true. High school has opened many opportunities for me, such as the Bilinguality Test, which made, which made me stand among other students due to my ability of speaking multiple languages. I also work as a pharmacy technician, which makes me one step closer into reaching my dream since I can work in the medical field at such a young age. I am very glad to be here, and the United States has opened many opportunities for me. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. Um, it really was super exciting to really showcase our students, uh, and I really have to thank all of these students for stepping up with the courage and the wonderful speeches they've done, and really everything they bring, uh, to the halls of Amherst High School. It's really all about them and those heartfelt stories, and watching them grow and achieve is just wonderful. And all of the adults that you see here, the, the presenters, Professor Maxick, Miss Lash, uh, and my partner Scott, um, and Nan, we have a lot of nicknames for each other. I call Nan International Nan, 'cause she works with the Bilinguality Program and...
I'm state sex, I...
Yeah. Interpreters from all lands, and how she finds the interpreters are wonderful. Scott's working, uh, very closely with all of our students of, of all levels and those that need the extra support, so I'm grateful to them, and your leadership, Superintendent Penella, having the guidance and the, the back. The structure and framework of the strategic plan really is our North Star, and we look forward to continuing with that journey, uh, and really showcasing more wonderful students and this dedicated staff at Amherst High School. Thank you.
Do any of the board members have any questions?
No, I'm very impressed.
I am too. It was wonderful to hear from you for these two weeks.
Yeah, um, you know, proud is the first word that comes to mind. Inspired, I think is the second one, so thank you all for being here, and thank you for, uh, you know, sharing the wonderful things going on at, at our high school. It's great to see and to showcase. Great job. And Dahlia, you stole our hearts, so I'm sure you're gonna be a cardiologist. Great job, thank you very much. Well done. And, uh, boy, these transitions are tough. In less exciting news, um, I'm pleased to welcome Turner Construction to provide us with an update on capital construction. So, as you know, um, we, we are in the middle of Phase Two, and we're beginning Phase Three, so I thought it would be nice to have Turner Construction here to talk about some of the work that has been ongoing since the end of last summer, and what we did over last weekend, and where we're headed before the end of the school year, as well as this summer. So welcome, Brittany.
We clear the room, Brittany. Hi, Brittany, I know I've met all of you before. I have Carla with me from the Turner team, and Patrick as well, he's with Young and Great Arts Tech. So as you guys know, Phase One is now complete, we've started Phase Two as of last spring. That will go for the next year and a half, um, until the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, Phase Three is now upon us, we began work last week, so I'll give you guys an update on where we fell, on where we are right now with Phase Two, and then we'll roll into Phase Three. So, we structured this with some before and after photos. Uh, the first part of the work that we did in Phase Two had to do with the music wing. We had to take that space a little bit ahead of time due to the amount of, um, construction, the unforeseen's we were concerned about, and some of the abatement activities that took place there. So, on the left-hand side, this was the corridor, as you're walking into the berrymine parking lot, you can now see on the right-hand side, we have all new finishes, the flooring is, um, beautiful with the new colors that, it's a little difficult to see in here, is it okay if we turn off a little light?
Yeah, please, Mr. Lonzak, could you help with that? Oh, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cause there's really great vinyl details that you can see...
That's great.
Along the right-hand side of the photo above the wooden lockers, so there's vinyl decals that mimic and, um, take the shape of the flooring, so you have really nice features there. Gorgeous new doors that have been installed, we've updated all the hardware to ensure that it's compliant with the fire code, the new lockdown, um, system that we've installed as well. Into some of the classrooms, this is one of the ones that was renovated, so the risers on the photo on the left-hand side have been removed and have now been replaced with movable ones. So those have been really nice for the teacher in there, I know he's been able to use that space for a lot of new opportunities, having his students move around the room, opposed to being stuck with the permanent risers that you saw on the left-hand side there. Um, new acoustical panels have been installed along the walls and the ceiling, really has helped with how the sound is in there with, depending on what, um, whether it's singing, a lot of instruments, um, but it's made the space versatile. This is the orchestra, orchestra room, so, um, you can see the acoustical panels following these spaces as well, within the ceiling grid and along the exterior walls. I know it's a little tough, there's now a computer designated area where students can work off there, which, um, they do not have before, so that's a nice new added feature as well. And I'm not seen in this photo, but from behind where the photo is taken from, there's a ton of new storage, it's really helped keep that space clean. I know it's hard to tell just because of all the stands and chairs that are in the photo, but, um, it really has helped with the teachers organizing their spaces. Um, this is the last room, this is their band room, so this space actually expanded quite a bit from where it was before. Um, there's sometimes forty students in a space like this, so, um, in addition to increasing the space in it, we also added an exterior door for safety reasons. Um, you can also see that there's a lot more light coming in, uh, from the new windows that were installed, we'll see a picture later, that, along the, um, front elevation of the building. But, um, same upgrades that were also added to the previous rooms. This is the high school main entrance space, so on the left-hand side, there was old casework. Um, a little bit difficult to tell, but the travertine tile that runs along the side of the stairs has now been cleaned up. A lot of it was popping off if you walked by, um, you know, six, seven months ago, you could see duct tape on it, making sure those didn't fall out, so that has all been now restored. A fresh coat of paint on the ceiling and interior walls, as well as new wall sconces, and the, um, original light fixture has been relamped and cleaned, so you can now see that that's operational. Um, the next few pictures are going to showcase the corridors, so big picture, um, we've now changed out all the lockers, they are the same color throughout the building, I think there were four or five colored before we started the project, so everything looks really nice and, um, clean. They're really heavy duty as well, so, you know, kids running by, I've seen kids slamming each other into lockers, they're, they're gonna hold up. Fresh coat of paint, uh, new lights installed. In the corridor here, the, on the right-hand side, you can see the main office. There used to be nail slots there, those now have had vinyl graphics installed showcasing some of the history of Amherst. So, um, the vinyl graphic closest to us here showcases, I think, graduation, I wish Greg was here, I think it's from the forties, um, where they're all outside in the center courtyard, um, so that's really cool to see. Here is the front elevation of the high school. You can see from the left to the right, the new windows have now been installed, um, they're gorgeous, it let in a ton more light in comparison to what they were before. They also have, um, window stops allowing for only two feet of ventilation, which is more than they had before, also keeping in mind the safety aspect for any students who are on the second, third, or second or third floor. And then window renovations will continue throughout the following year, this summer, at both the high school and middle school. So moving into Phase Three, the students had their last day of, um, being in the cafeteria this past Friday. So over the weekend, once the last period came about, our contractors began cutting up the serving line and preparing to move the kitchen into the south gym so that we are able to start construction, um, we are actually starting as of yesterday. So, um, big picture here is the layout of the new south gym. So we have covered it now in, um, highly protective tarp that's really... So we have covered it now in highly protective tarp that's really washable and easy for the maintenance staff to ensure a clean space. On the center top portion, oh yeah, can you sign off? The serving line runs across here. It's been divided and it's actually the existing serving line that was in the kitchen. So we're able to save some money and reuse that there. The contractors did a really great job cutting it up, shaving the ends, making sure that everything was safe for the students. In the center, we've reused the milk cooler. We have warmers in the back that are existing, existing refrigerators. So all of that was great and it involved a lot of planning from the kitchen staff as well and their help just to make sure that we are doing this, you know, in a cost savings manner. Along with that, we had the electrician on site to ensure that there was enough power running out there. So with cutting up that serving line, we had to prepare it to ensure that placing it in a new space, modifying it, everything ran smoothly. There were some minor hiccups on Sunday just with questioning some of the temperatures within the refrigerators, but we figured that out. That was simply the outside thermometer not matching the inside. So everything went really well. From what I've heard, students are adjusting and teachers are really happy with space. I don't know if Tony, you have anything else to add to that, but...
Well, it was just pretty remarkable. I mean, Tracy Oll will be our Director of Food Services back there. And, you know, she joined us in the fall, in October, and has hit the ground running and, you know, has handled this with her staff with ease. So as of Friday night at our basketball game, you could hear them cutting up the line and removing some of the stuff. And then I came in Sunday morning and saw Tracy and her staff in there getting ready to serve breakfast first thing Monday morning. So it was really a quick turnaround and a lot of kudos to not only our kids for being so adaptable, but Turner for having a well-articulated plan and our staff for being so flexible and accommodating. Because otherwise, you know, we wouldn't be able to renovate the cafeteria in the manner that you'll see in the plans that are forthcoming and be ready for school in the fall. Because the construction season unfortunately in July and August is just too short.
Great, thank you. And I'll now, oh, sorry, there was, we had some more pictures. So this is what it looks like in person here. So you can see it is the old existing line there. We've added some stanchions to separate the students from where they're sitting in the serving line. And then I'll pass it over to Patrick now, who will talk about what the kitchen cafeteria looked like, beginning in September for the students.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick. I'm with Young and Right Architectural. I've been your project architect for almost three years now. So going on with it. So these are the renderings that we proposed to the school district last spring. So on our left here, we are looking at the kitchen area. The main move here was the reconfiguration of the space. There was a long line of storage rooms here. The current plan is calling for the removal of those to allow more access to natural light. And this is also allowing the reconfiguration of the circulation. Currently, the serving lines and the students circulating through the building are running into each other and creating a congestion. So by reconfiguring the space, we're hoping to improve that. The cafeteria also features a number of different zones with a wide variety of seating options.
I just want to interject for a moment.
Sure.
So to give you some perspective, this area here where you see this walkway, if you've been in our cafeteria currently, that is all filled with tables. That's the courtyard wall. And then the serving line is, was here, and this is all kitchen behind the wall. So we are knocking down, I think, at least two walls to expand that space, push circulation to the exterior of this space, add a ton of seating in here. And then we also, when you go around that corner, heading towards the art rooms, have a couple other areas of seating.
And also in that move, we are condensing the kitchen a little bit. But currently, the kitchen has a pretty odd configuration. It's pretty long, involves a lot of walking back and forth if you want to get to one side or the other. So we have pushed it back, but also pushed it out a little ways. And this is allowing the dishwasher to get a lot closer to, to the rest of the kitchen. And that's pretty much cafeteria. These are the Home and Careers and Art Room on the right. The Home and Careers, you can see back here, there's individual stations for, lost my mouse. Individual stations for group activity and also the requested demonstration table. This is a big issue that John Pliss had with the current spaces. It's not really great for demonstration. It's, and with cooking, a lot of that comes with kind of the visual. So there's a little bit of movement to add a live stream in camera to allow students to have a great view from anywhere they stand within the room. And additionally, you'll notice everything here is on wheels. We wanted to create a lot of flexibility and allow the teachers, not just now, but in the future, to use the rooms how they see fit. So you'll see that built into a lot of our classroom designs is flexibility, durability, and allowing teachers to maximize their space.
What floor is this, the Home and Careers?
So that is in the basement.
That's the basement.
And when you leave the cafeteria heading towards Berryman, that's the first room on the left.
Yeah.
And then the art rooms are on the right.
Okay.
So those are part of the construction for this summer. But when you make the left in that Berryman wing in the basement, those are slated for the following summer.
Okay. I should visualize. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So right across from the Home and Careers room on that front side of the building is the Art Room. There, we're calling for a little bit of spatial reconfiguration with the removal of a storage room and the creation of a new storage room on the other side of the room that will be a little bit more efficient and also act as a little bit of a buffer between the stairs and the Art Room. Here we have the wood shop. The current plan is another spatial reconfiguration where we are creating this wall right here to separate the wood shop space and the actual classroom space. So keep all the dust in one area and have a functioning, flexible classroom on the other side. Can't quite see it in here, but there's dedicated space for a lot of the kind of newer technologies that you're seeing in 21st century STEM classrooms. You're seeing laser cutters and CNCs and some other technologies that the district is looking into. A lot of exciting stuff happening in that room. On the left is the Innovation Lab. So this is now on the right side, right off the Berryman lot. This is where the former TV studio and darkroom for photography currently are. The plan is calling for the creation of an Innovation Lab. This is a little bit smaller than the classroom, but it has a lot of different options for students to sit. A lot of decentralization to get much more opportunities for one-on-one interaction. On the right is the, on the other side of this, through the window, is the Graphic Design Lab. This is a U-shaped desk with computers and a little bit of tables in the center for group activity. And on the far, you'll see the new TV studio. We carved out a space in there for that and video production as well. And on the opposite side of the hallway is the Ceramics Room. Here, the plan is calling for a partition, a moveable partition that allows this room to be adapted to a ceramics room, but also a classroom. So the main focus of this room is the pottery wheels. They run directly down the center. They're built in. We're building some sloping to get better drainage through there. Allow a little less deterioration of the floor finishes. So hopefully it'll hold up a little bit better than the current one. And a lot of casework for all those pottery projects that students create.
So we expect this summer to address the Home and Careers Room and what Mr. Appeler's Art Room, which is on the main street side of the basement. And then in the following summer, to renovate the wood shop, the lab, and the ceramics room that are on the Berryman side of the basement. And of course, then there's corridor work that needs to be done in those areas as well, which include flooring and lockers, painting, you know, similar stuff that happened on floors one, two, and three last summer.
Is ceramics still a popular class to take?
I don't know the exact enrollment, but yeah. I mean, and you go from different levels of, you know, where you just do slab work versus the wheel work. So there's a ceramics one and a ceramics two. But I think we find that our power art classes are highly, have high enrollment, including...
Yeah.
So some of the exciting things that we're planning for the 21, 22 school year include, you know, digital photography, video editing, a design and production combination class between art and technology. And there's a few other things that we're working on over the next couple of years that will help change how we use these spaces.
Is there a plan to put this up on the project website? You know, right now, we just have Phase One and Two up there. And I know the kids, now that the cafeteria has begun, they're like, what's the cafeteria gonna look like? So having those pictures up there would be helpful, huh?
Yeah, I think so. Dan, would you mind adding that as a follow-up item to update the Capitol Project site?
Yeah, right. I can always, like, it's not gonna become a senior.
Well, thank you. Does anyone have any further questions? So as we talk about capital construction, I just wanted to offer a quick conversation or an opportunity for a conversation about our Capital Reserve Fund. So as you know, the Capital Reserve Fund needs to be voted on by the voters as part of our budget vote. And when we ask them to vote on a Capital Reserve Fund, we're asking them to authorize the creation of a fund that has a limit to it. And it's a fund that is, you know, generally has a 10-year expiration and it has a limit of how much we can put in it. So we currently have one Capital Reserve Fund that was created in 2017 and it has a $500,000 limit on it. We have about $300,000 in that, $300,000 in that reserve fund. So one of the questions that I wanted to propose to the board is, are you interested in creating a second Capital Reserve Fund as a proposition on this year's budget? And if so, what might that limit be? Again, keeping in mind that we don't have to fund it to that limit, but it's more of a we can if we are able to. And the reason I bring the conversation up is because a Capital Reserve Fund is a nice way for us to save money for future capital projects that may offset the local share, which is generally 25% of the expense of a future capital project.
It also helps us get lower rates on our borrowing too, because we have those funds saved up.
Yeah.
But what's the need, though, to do it at this next vote?
The need would be that if we have funds beyond $200,000 available in this year or next year to add towards future capital construction, we aren't able to save it.
We're not able to reuse the current Capital Reserve again.
Right, so once...
Like, we establish it, we fund it, we use it, it's done.
Right.
So if we ever wanted to do that again, we have to establish a new one.
Yeah, and if we, at this point, we can't use the money that's in the current Capital Construction Fund towards this project because we used 1.3 million from our previous reserve, our previous reserve for capital construction as well as repair. So we had about a total of 1.3 million in those two funds. And we use that towards this project that is ongoing, which started, or was voted on in 2016. So the current Capital Construction Fund that we have would be earmarked to offset the local share for a future project. So we do have the ability to add up to $200,000 more to that fund. But to give you perspective, if we were to propose a $10 million capital project to the voters, their local share would be about 2.5 million that the taxpayers would be responsible for. We can offset that by $500,000 at this point. But then the other 2 million would be worked into our tax cap calculation and levied on the community.
When do we expect to propose a new capital project?
If we wanted to continue capital construction in, at the end of this project, so this one is slated to be done in the calendar year of 2021, which we anticipate there would be punchless stuff through the spring of '22. If we wanted to continue with construction in 2022, which would dovetail right at the end of this one, we'd have to go to vote no later than December of next, next December of 2020.
Okay.
My concern is, and I read the Moody's Report, and maybe everyone should read it, but we're actually financing two capital projects currently.
In what, in, go on.
So, so we're actually financing two projects. I mean, we have the previous one and we have the current one. You know, I mean, it does talk about our high debt level that we have. And it also says that we won't be making any significant capital projects and we're finishing up our capital projects. And so I think to change that, that's a material amount of the bonds. And so one of the reasons that we got the raise that we did are because of that. So that's what my concern is.
Yeah, so the plan that we had outlined or had been talking about with our financial advisors would be to phase in a future project that would allow us to keep our debt relatively flat so that as we are, let's say, for example, it would be, this one's $29 million. If it was $29 million, you would do it over the course of two or three phases. The first phase would be smaller. And then when in '24, '25, when we have debt falling off, the second phase would be a little bit larger, but it would keep our debt service payments relatively flat. The problem you have with the tax cap calculation is if you have spikes or you have, you know, big dips with your debt, it really does weigh on your tax cap calculation. So if you try, the goal is to try to keep your debt relatively flat in some cases so that you don't have those big peaks and valleys as it relates to your levy.
I'd actually like to see that.
Well, you did see it a couple of years ago when we had a levy of minus 4.6 or .46.
That's what I'm talking about. I'd like to see it going forward in a presentation from financial advisors so I can actually understand that.
Yeah, so the point, so that's planned for our Capital Construction Committee. So what we're doing now is we are looking to identify what our needs are. So I have each building and athletics looking at what might be your wish list items for a future project. And then we have our capital, our building condition survey where we may identify what the potential scope is of a future project. And then the second piece is the financial piece. So if we know what our needs are and what our project needs are, then the second piece would be, okay, where do we stand from our debt perspective and when do we have debt falling off and how might we phase it in? The goal that we have for the spring is to bring that to our Capital Construction Committee.
All right, but in that scenario, we will never not have debt. We will have construction forever. And I just don't see, I guess I'd have to see it on paper to really understand that. And then the other thing I'm concerned about is what the governor proposed.
Right.
I mean, that to me is a huge issue.
Of changing how the reimbursement's done, yeah, that would...
And what gets reimbursed, right, is what I understand.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously something that has been the target of strong advocacy, but that is a big unknown at this point. But what we're talking about here is the... But what we're talking about here is the creation of a reserve fund that we may or may not use. It's just authorizing a fund that if we decide we want to go forward with future construction, we have the ability to set aside some money to offset that local cost. It's not a commitment to fund it. It's not a commitment to a future project. It could stay with, it could be a $12 million limit and stay with a balance of zero for the 10 years that it exists and then expire.
And if we end up getting a check from the government for the money that they owe us, which has happened to a district near us, they got a check for a million dollars. We would like to have a place to put it, you know? So we need to consider that as well.
Well, I guess.
And I disagree. I don't, I don't view us having a small amount of debt as a bad thing.
We don't have small amount of debt.
We have 20% of what our allowable debt is. We are at 20% of what we could be borrowing.
Do you really think that we would be investment grade if we borrowed $190 million?
I don't think that, no.
We wouldn't be close.
But I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all.
For someone to have actually...
I'm just saying.
I think for someone to have actually said that your borrowing limit is $190 million was absolutely irresponsible. I actually can't believe that somebody said that.
Okay. I understand where you're going with it, and because we are responsible management people of this district, we would never do that. What I'm saying is that the reports that they gave us merely point out that we were only at 20% of what we could borrow, and we would never go to 100%.
Well, and you also, I think, look at what percent of your budget, your debt, accounts for. And typically, we are much lower than our neighbors in the region and in the state. So I don't know the exact number off the top of our head, but I think our debt accounts for 5% or less of our overall budget, which, when you look at, you know, districts in the region, you know, it's, it's on the lower end of the average.
I'm not sure that's the case, because when I looked at the Moody's and S&amp;P reports on the bonds of the different districts, I didn't get that sense at all.
Well, I have the data, if you'd like to see it. I don't, I think we're a little bit off target here. I think the question that I wanted to discuss is, do we want to create a Capital Construction Reserve Fund that has no commitment to fund it, no dollars being allocated to it, and no commitment to future construction? That's the question.
All right. So my question was...
The question is not about whether or not we're gonna do a future project. The question's not about how much debt we currently have, when that falls off. Our Moody's Report, our borrowing, I think that's a little bit off topic right now. I think the question I really wanted to explore is, do you want to have a proposition on the May ballot? Because we are required to report what our propositions are going to be before you actually adopt the budget in April. So we, in March, we have to tell the Comptroller's Office, we're going to have one proposition, we're gonna have two propositions, we're going to have three propositions, and what they are generally. We don't have to give them dollar amounts. So I think the question I was proposing to you all is, would you like a proposition that potentially creates a new Capital Reserve Fund?
And my question was, why not? And so this would go off in 10 years. If we did it in two years or another year, then it just stretches it out. Your answer was, in case we have extra money?
Funds available.
Are we anticipating extra money, that we're gonna fully fund the current Capital Reserve? And then, you know, extra beyond that?
Well, you never know until you know. As you know, at this point, if we're, if we're projecting fund balance as of March 3rd, we know it's going to change, you know, six different ways until the actual numbers are audited in the summer. So, you know, last year, our projections had us adding $300,000 to our reserve at the end of June. And then over the summer, once we received our stop-loss reimbursement, I mean, I'm telling you things you know, there's so many different factors that go into our school district budget. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, let alone in May or June, as it relates to some of our unplanned expenditures. So the reason why you might want a Capital Reserve Fund with a higher limit is so if you have funds available, you might be able to set them aside to offset the taxpayers' burden down the road.
Are you only able to do propositions with the May vote? Or like, if we...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you, if we did a capital project vote in December, you couldn't add the proposition there?
That might be a question for us to explore, if we would have it as a proposition for a capital construction vote. I'm not 100% sure about that. Our history has always been to have it as the May vote. So when you authorized the 2007 reserve, you know, that was done in May, and then 2017 was the last one. You know, again, I think it's a good conversation to have. I think we may have gone off track about whether or not we want to do a future capital project. I, I wanted to make sure I'm clear. I hope I'm communicating effectively. Even if you authorize a Capital Reserve Fund with a $10 million limit, there's no, nothing saying that you're going to fund it. Every year, you make that decision in June. If funds are available, how much would you want to put in each reserve? And we have that discussion every year before the end of the school year. So you might authorize the creation of a fund and never fund it. But the reality of it is, if we have a mild winter, we don't, you need a lot of salt in one year, we are low on utilities, we come under budget on healthcare because we're healthier in a particular year, and we have $1 million left at the end of the year, the most you can put in your current Capital Reserve Fund is $200,000. I just look at the reality that we have a middle school, I think, that was built in the 50s, the high school that was built in the 30s. And as much as we've made progress towards updating them and we see what is forthcoming, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done in those buildings to keep them up to date.
We have another meeting in March, correct?
Yes.
So we could table this discussion until we have the chance to look at the reports that, you know, are being referenced and have a conversation about it at the next meeting?
I think we would have missed the deadline to notify the Comptroller's Office of our propositions. That's why it's on the agenda tonight and not in the next budget presentation on March So the notification would be to the Comptroller's Office, we plan to have two propositions. One would be to approve a budget, and we would leave the dollar amount blank, you know, 60 million or whatever it ends up being. Second would be to approve the creation of a Capital Reserve Fund, but the dollar amount would be blank.
So let me ask you a different way. If we put it on now, we could always take it off, but we can't add it later.
Right.
So if we decide that we are going to let the state know that we are going to authorize, you know, that we're going to have this on our next ballot, then we could always have a discussion about it later and take it off, but we can't then put it on?
Yeah. There's a deadline that is between now and March 17th where we have to notify them of the propositions. I don't know about whether or not we can take it off, because once we notify them, I think we're locked into having those two propositions.
I don't.
Yeah. I don't know that, it was a question I asked. I just needed to know when we needed to notify them by of the number of propositions. It doesn't mean that we can't propose it in the following year. I think what I was anticipating is, you know, we've had a relatively mild winter. Utility bills, I'm expecting, are lower than budgeted based on the fact that we didn't know last April what this winter was going to be like.
It's not over.
Yeah. And we've, we've seen, you know, that we are doing well in some of the other areas that we've budgeted. So I was anticipating we may have the opportunity to add to our reserves.
So that's one of those reserves that you can only use for that?
Yes.
So when it runs out, you either have used it or you put it back in to the general or whatever, whatever we call it?
Yeah. I mean, you may be able to transfer, do an inter-fund transfer if you decide you're getting towards the end of the life of the Capital Reserve and you're not going to use the money that's there. You may be able to transfer it to another reserve that isn't fully funded, like an EBLO or something like that, but...
Couldn't it be used for any of those, that $100,000 limit that we use things for at all?
The capital outlay? That's something I'd have to look into, because we don't, we budget the local share for that. So I don't know that we would allocate it out of the Capital Reserve Fund, but I would think that would be an allowable expense. But the capital outlays have their own rules that govern them. But that's only a $100,000 limit by law. So the local share on that is fairly minimal, excuse me, minimal. So you'd have to do a significant amount of outlays, chip away at a $300,000 balance.
Right. So, but we can, we can do it, we don't have to fund it.
Right.
How about we take a poll and see if who agrees that we should have it and who agrees, thinks we should not have it? Are you for or against the...
I'm for. You can tell me, yeah.
Yeah. I'm five. Three, one, I'm five. Four.
Yeah, I guess. I have more questions about the, what comes next. So that's my, that's my real bigger, those are my questions.
Yeah.
Going forward, so.
Understandable. They are big questions.
I like the optics of having it with the December vote, like if it were to be, you know, if we were able to establish one at the same time as we're looking to approve a capital project. I think that ties it together nicely. It gives a, you know, a more clear picture of what we're attempting to do.
Mm-hmm.
But if we're not able to do it, then...
Well, but it also doesn't address the current, the current situation.
Yeah. Well, and a lot of times, and when we, and when we...
We don't know if we need it before that.
Well, it's just like having credit available. It just, yeah, it's...
I mean, when you propose a project, for example, if we did propose one in December, you know, we would have to notify the community of what the tax impact of that would be. So funding, creating the fund and then funding it after the fact doesn't allow us to really be transparent, to tell them, you know, this, over the 15-year life of the borrowing would be X number of dollars on your tax bill.
It appears that all five in attendance are for the putting it on end, putting the proposal out there.
Um, we were able to find out from Ms. Bezinski that the, when the budget resolution is adopted, which is actually the April 7th meeting, is when we would have to decide if we have that proposition.
So we could still...
We do have one more meeting to discuss it.
Yeah.
But I, can I just say one more thing? From my point from, as a district clerk, we do have to have four notifications in the paper.
Right.
And that will be before the April meeting.
Yeah. That's what I was talking about tonight, is our first notification is required before our next meeting, just to say that there will be a vote and there will be one proposition. There will be a vote and there will be two propositions. And again, it doesn't commit to any dollar amount, doesn't commit to, it just commits to that we'll have two propositions, one for the creation of a fund and the other one for the spending plan.
Well, we did just vote that we all are in favor of it, so...
Yeah. So then we can have more discussion down the road about what the limit of that reserve fund may be. Great. Thank you. That's the last item of the superintendent's report. Thanks.
Need a motion from New Business. I'll make a motion for New Business, items E1, A through I, 2, A through D, and 3, C, D, and G. Give us a second. A second. So we approve the following business items, E1, A through I. Personal items, E2, A through D, E3, C, D, and G. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to be opposed. So we have a vote of five to zero to approve New Business items. Are there any follow-up action items?
I've been asked to add the Phase 3 information on the Capitol Project Site to answer a question, can we have a Capital Reserve proposition at a Capitol vote? If we notify the Comptroller, that we have two propositions, can we remove one and discuss the limit of it, of the Capital Reserve at a later meeting?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the key also being the mandatory notifications that we're providing to the community in addition to the notifications we're providing elsewhere. So I wouldn't feel comfortable notifying the community that we're gonna have a ballot with two propositions and then deciding down the road that we are not going to do that. So if it's, if it's a, there's a shadow of a doubt, we don't have to have a second proposition on the ballot.
I don't believe there is a shadow of doubt. It's good information this don't happen.
Yeah.
Great.
For future.
Okay. So we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters pertaining to the employment of a particular person.
Give me a second.
Aye. I'm eight.
Okay. So all in favor of convening to executive session, so...
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for everybody who's left.